Welcome to the City Council's October 11th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Jen Woolison, City Council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller, and Cecilia Taylor. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Niradorti, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our October 11th regular City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment, for those of you participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. You're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. For members of the public who are participating in person in our City Council chambers, after the mayor calls for public comment, I ask that you stand up to the podium and just form a line, of course, including social distancing. I'd also like to announce that the city is currently recruiting for advisory body vacancies on the Environmental Quality Commission, Library Commission, and Planning Commission. Application deadline is this Friday, the 14th. You can visit our website at menlopark.org backslash commissions for an application. You can also call the City Clerk's office or email the City Clerk's office. That concludes my introductions at this time.
Thank you. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under agenda sections, presentations, and proclamations, study sessions, consent calendar, regular business, information items. City Clerk Karen, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for items not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, ask that you step up to the microphone. And our first speaker will be Jasmine Soria Delgado.
Hi, this is Jasmine. Good evening, my name is first name Jasmine, last name is Soria Delgado. I want to start off by thanking the council members for their service and for creating a space for me to speak on a project I'm currently working on through my internship. I'm excited to share that MidPen Housing, the developer, owner, and service provider for more than 300 homes in Menlo Park is looking for a muralist for our Menlo Park Gateway Rising projects. Menlo Rising is an affordable 140-unit community in construction and is expected to be completed summer of 2023. It is located at 1345 Willow Road in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Moreover, I want to share a little bit about the specifications of the murals. There will be two murals, one inside the property and one outside. The dimension of the murals on the exterior wall is 33 by 11 feet. This wall will be highly visible to pedestrian traffic along Willow Road and located next to the main entrance of the apartment building. Next, the dimension of the indoor mural is 19 by 10 feet. This mural is on the first floor, adjacent to the residence mailboxes. And while we encourage all artists to apply, we will have special consideration to a local artist from the Bell Haven neighborhood. This brings me to my next point, which is if that artist is present with us today, then please take a moment to write the following details down. Artists are invited to submit their portfolio by October 23rd. Furthermore, for folks who want more information or how to apply, you can visit our website at www.gateawayfamilyredevelopment-midpen.com. If folks wish to get in contact with me personally, my cellphone number is 650-773-9195. And my email is jasmine, J A S M I N E dot Soria Delgado at midpen-housing.org. And lastly, as someone who lives closely to his property and in the Bell Haven neighborhood, I'm excited to see this beautification project come into fruition, as I really do see this as an investment in my community. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on items proclamation Latino Heritage Month?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item E1 of proclamation for Latino Heritage Month, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, press star nine. For members of the public participating in person, please step up to the podium. And this will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation item E1. Seeing none. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Recognizing October 2022 as Latino Heritage Month, whereas Governor Gavin Newsom has issued a proclamation recognizing Latino Heritage Month in the state of California, and whereas during Latino Heritage Month, we honor and celebrate the immeasurable contributions and unique stories of Latinos, California's largest ethnic group, and whereas Californians know that our strength and prosperity lie in our state's diversity, including the 15.6 million Latino Californians with roots that can be traced across the Americas, indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa and beyond. And whereas our Latino community has always been and will always be deeply rooted in California's history, identity, and success. From the state's beginnings to the present day, generations of Latinos helped build our state as we know it and shaped our social, political, and economic landscapes. Across all facets of society, Latino Californians contribute to our state's vibrancy and growth every day. And whereas throughout California history, our Latino communities have fought inequalities and injustices, shaping the state's social, political, and economic landscapes, and that legacy continues today. We recognize and are grateful to the Latino Californians who help keep our neighborhoods and communities vibrant and prosperous. They are teachers and business owners, scientists and soldiers, farmworkers and first responders, artists and activists, colleagues and friends. And whereas, we also recognize the persistent disparities and disproportionate challenges that Latino communities face and recommit to our work to help all Californians thrive. Our state has made historic strides to expand access to healthcare coverage, advance major investments in educational equity and affordable housing, and provide unprecedented relief for Californians hit hardest by the pandemic, among other targeted investments and efforts. And whereas with bold action and inclusive policies to expand opportunity across the board, push back against the forces of hate, and advance our collective progress, California will continue to lead the progress toward equality and prosperity for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Betsy Nash, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council and the city, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Latino Heritage Month. Consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion, unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Is there any City Council discussion or questions on the consent calendar? City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar items, F1, City Council Meeting Minutes, F2, the annual inflation protection adjustment for the local minimum wage, F3, a resolution to conduct City Council and advisory bodies remotely, and the use of hybrid meetings, or F4, authorizing the mayor to submit a letter in support of efforts related to the Stanford University Development. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone. If participating in person, please step up to the podium. This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, F1 through F4. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second on the table to approve the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Woolson?
I'll move.
Councilmember Taylor?
I'll second.
City Clerk Karen, please state the motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Woolson and a second by City Council Member Taylor to approve the consent calendar. Any further questions or clarification need from the City Council? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Combs?
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller?
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Woolson?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require council approval. The first regular business item is G1, provide input on a request for proposals for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future Menlo Park Community Campus Aquatic Center. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'm going to go and need to recuse myself at this time because my son has worked at the Aquatic Center as a lifeguard within the past year and exceeds the minimum amount allowable by state for there not to be a conflict of interest. Also, I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting, there's just one other item that'll be voted on the seat, and I trust the council to go ahead and be able to handle that without me. So, you guys have a wonderful evening.
To introduce the item is Library and Community Services Director Sean Reinhardt, Library and Community Services Supervisor Tricia Mullin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, this item is to provide input on the draft request for proposals for an aquatics operator. Just a bit of background, in February, City Council directed staff to repair a request for proposals also referred to as an RFP to be issued in autumn of 2022 for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future NPCC Aquatic Center. Then on August 23rd, City Council reviewed an extensive aquatics program analysis, which included a citywide community survey and provided direction to staff regarding desired elements of the RFP. So tonight, we're looking at a draft RFP and welcome and appreciate any additional feedback or input the City Council may provide. Just quickly to reiterate some of the key items in the staff report and RFP, a proposed timeline for issuing and completing the RFP process. Here's a summary of some of the highlights here. I won't go through the entire list, but you can see, I'm starting with tonight, October 11th, and running through, ultimately, our ideal here would be authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in the February timeframe of next year. As part of the overall process to get to this point, a number of key city priorities were identified by City Council and also through the community survey to be incorporated into the RFP. Now, the RFP is structured to offer some flexibility to respondents to develop proposals that are balancing the city's key priorities, but also recognizing that respondents have operational needs for an operation as complex as the aquatics program. So, these are, these proposals that are from qualified aquatics operators that demonstrate a high degree of responsiveness to these key priorities, in addition to the basic capabilities and competencies required to operate an aquatics program, those will be deemed more competitive for selection. So again, these aren't hard requirements, but they are key priorities that the city is looking for. So just to quickly go through them, they also are in the staff report. First is to operate the Burgess Pool and the future NPCC Aquatic Center for public access year-round, seven days per week, and as a baseline, no fewer than 63 hours per week at each location, as calculated by an average over the course of a full calendar year. Now, of course, there'll be some differences, you know, for seasonal operations and maybe different days of the week might have slightly different hours. And of course, we're looking for respondents to exceed this baseline, but we just want to kind of put that out there, this is, this is kind of a baseline, and we're looking for responses that need to exceed that. Also, to operate the two pools with comparable or equivalent operating schedules at both locations, that's a high priority for the city, but understanding there needs to be some allowance for local, hyper-local variances, you know, the neighborhoods that they're in, there's some specific considerations at each site, but overall comparable equivalent between the two locations is the ideal. Furthermore, respondents who meet this key priority would be deemed more competitive, and that is to seek city approval for new aquatics user fees or modifications to existing fees, with the mutual understanding by the city and the operator that selected that, A, user fees are the primary source of revenue that are necessary to sustain the operations of a quality aquatics program, but also B, that user fees can and do present barriers to entry for some residents, especially residents who are particularly vulnerable, such as children and families who live in low-income households, seniors, people with disabilities, and so on, and also to acknowledge that barriers can persist even with the presence of scholarship or subsidy programs. Additional key priorities are a revenue sharing agreement with the city to offset a portion of the city's facility maintenance costs at Burgess Pool. On August 23rd, the City Council identified a preferred cost recovery rate, the medium cost recovery rate as outlined in our cost recovery policy, that would be anywhere from 30% to 70% of the city's costs. Now, this would be subject to negotiation and finalization in the actual agreement that would result from the RFP, so the RFP doesn't delve into like specific details here, but does give, you know, kind of that range, and again, as a preferred criteria, a key priority that would render a proposal more competitive if this part is met. And then also to dedicate, there's a few here that are about programming at the pool, both pools dedicating operating hours and pool space to open swim and community swim, pro playing social time, and the key here is that those would be at times, and including like lane hours and other details like that, which would be worked out in the agreement that are deemed convenient and accessible to the folks who are there to benefit, which would be children and families in particular, and Menlo Park residents in particular. And one of the ways to assess that would be through community satisfaction surveys, where we ask people, are these convenient and accessible to you? And just a note that those surveys would be administered by the city in partnership with the operator. Similarly, on the program front, offering aqua wellness or therapeutic classes and therapeutic in the general sense of the term, in formats, and at times that are deemed convenient and accessible to residents who would benefit from them, seniors, people who have disabilities, others. And again, measuring that in part by asking users, are these convenient and accessible to you? Also, to provide meaningful access to effective water safety instruction at city aquatic centers for every Menlo Park resident child, regardless of their family's ability to pay user fees. There's a few ways to get there, so what we're looking for from respondents who want to be more competitive by hitting this key priority is a feasible proposal to do that. And then lastly, and I want to note, there was a typo in the staff report where item eight here kind of got appended to item seven, so it kind of is a run-on sentence, but this is a separate category. And this is in a bucket of diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and has three parts. One would be to provide meaningful employment opportunities in these city-run, up-city-owned facilities to qualified Menlo Park residents, especially those who live in the immediate vicinity of City Aquatic Center, understanding that would be subject to all the other criteria around employment, but just to make sure that those opportunities are made available. Also, and this should be almost a no-brainer, but we definitely want to call it out, to foster an organizational culture that is based on the foundations of equity, inclusion, belonging, and justice that creates a safe and welcoming environment for, in our facilities for all Menlo Park residents, regardless of their background or all their lived experiences that contribute to a vibrant and accepting community. This one should be easy for any respondent to meet. Also, to reduce and remove barriers to entry for city residents who are most vulnerable, as mentioned elsewhere in this presentation. So that's the key city priorities, again, not hard requirements, but definitely hitting these priorities would make proposals more competitive, and there's some flexibility there for operators because we understand it's a complex operation, and respondents will be building proposals that have to kind of make sense from an operational standpoint. So that kind of summarizes that portion, then we have one other portion of our RFP and staff report we'd like to highlight, and this kind of gets more to the requirements and terms. Most of these would be subject to negotiation and finalization in an actual agreement that results, but these are called out in the RFP and in the staff report so that respondents are aware that these are some of the key terms that the city is going to be looking for. And so with that, I'm going to turn this portion of the presentation over to Tricia Mullin, who is our new Library and Community Services Supervisor, and she oversees recreation and sports and is the city's liaison to the aquatics program.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Sean was speaking about, I will be kind of speaking to the proposed requirements and terms. Per City Council's feedback and direction, various requirements and terms are incorporated into the draft RFP and or will be included in the resulting operator's agreement with the selected provider. We want to recognize this, this is a partial list, and all of the requirements and terms will be incorporated in the RFP and/or in the agreement with selected provider. Proposed requirements and terms are: Provider to prepare and submit a detailed annual performance report to city staff no later than January 30th of each year, including total program hours and program area, participation statistics, including resident and non-resident percentages, community satisfaction survey results, and user group feedback by program area, pool schedule and allocation, including projections to the upcoming year, fees by program area, and a fee comparison to other pool, public pools in the region, annual audits and reviews demonstrating standards of care are met, risk management documents and training certificates by staff member. This report will be reported and presented to the City Council no longer or no later than March 31st of each year. Provider will submit to city staff quarterly financial statements no later than 45 days after the end of each fiscal quarter, and annual financial statements no later than 45 days after the close of the fiscal year. Financial statements submitted to the city shall be considered public records subject to applicable government transparency law. Provider to consult with city staff before altering the operation hours, launching new aquatic programs, making significant changes to existing programs, or significantly altering any other substantive aspects of providers' operation and programs at city aquatic centers. Additionally, provider to seek city approval before engaging the service of subcontractors or other parties not directly employed by a provider to deliver aquatics programs and/or services in city aquatic facilities. Provider to assign sufficient qualified staffing to maintain safe and effective operations at city aquatic facilities. Provider staff will be required, will meet the required certifications for each position. Provider to maintain appropriate and safe ratios of lifeguards to pool users at all times, consistent with industry best practices and applicable regulations. Provider will maintain reasonable evidence and documents of its hiring practices, background checks, certifications, and training, including documentation of pre-service employment, orientation, on-the-job training, regular and service training, and certification training for each employee. Provider will furnish these records to the city for inspection on request. Provider will demonstrate adequate risk management planning and practices by conducting annual audits and reviews by qualified external experts in coordination and oversight with city staff. That's the conclusion of our presentation, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G1, provide input on a request for proposals for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future Menlo Park Community Campus Aquatic Center, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. For members of the public participating in person, please step up to the podium. And our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett.
Good, good evening, Council and city staff. This is Lynn Bramlett, and first, I appreciate that the council has put the RFP out for bid based on concerns that I've heard. But even if there were no concerns, I think, I believe that all of our major public-private partnerships should have some kind of oversight and as background. So first, I ask if Menlo Park has a policy for public-private partnerships or even a policy for the city's least use of city land facilities. And I'm using terminology in an auditor report of Palo Alto's that was relatively recently conducted. So as, so it seems to me that in fairness to all major nonprofit arrangements, and I would think Little House could be one, maybe the MA Cooperative Children's Center, et cetera, there should be some kind of consistent policy. And while I appreciate what I'm hearing tonight, I ask, is it time, if we don't have this policy, to take a look at all of them? And I recalled the former city attorney. I asked him, you know, how many we had, and he said rough, it was just at a public budget meeting. He said about 50. And I asked him for the, are these documented? And he said, no. He said, most don't amount to much, but it's, you know, to me, that is not a good answer. And when I see some of them come forward, I have to ask if the public good is there. And so just in fairness, and I realize the staff is very busy right now, I'm not suggesting this right away, that this matter be looked into. And I did read the report, so there was a news article, I got the audit report. First, I think it's a good idea to be periodically auditing the city's operations by an outside source just from an efficiency performance point of view. But it did talk about a number of things in the Palo Alto's policy that I think could be very useful in Menlo Park at some future point to discuss these topics. So I don't expect any comment tonight, and I didn't have time to get this report before and email the council, but I will do so in this coming week with a pointer to the report along with a brief summary of my suggestion. So hopefully, that's clear to everyone, so, you know, I'm talking about fairness, maybe, you know, to have something like this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on item G1. Our next speaker will be Janet Davis.
Thank you for discussing this. I would like to make sure that whatever happens, major consideration is given to what the citizens want and not what the athletic teams want. And I also want to know if you're doing anything to figure out how the city could run the pool. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item G1. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We are now open for City Council discussion. Councilmember Combs, would you like to start off now? Vice Mayor Woolson? Vice Mayor Wilson.
Um, thank you, Mayor Nash. Thank you to Ms. Bramlett and Ms. Davis for your public comments and to staff. For all the work that went into not just the document we see tonight, but the survey and the. Study session that we had that helped inform what goes into the RFP. Following up on Ms. Davis's question about the city running it, can you let the public know kind of? Are we still, I mean, I know the answer. Are we still considering it, bringing it in-house? And if we are, when would that consideration be made? And do we have time to do that in case we don't get proposals back or a proposal that we'd like? So that there, we don't risk having the pool close and a lapse in service.
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor, and to Ms. Davis for raising the question. The answer is yes, the city council did reserve. The option to further explore the city operating the aquatic centers. On August 23rd, the city council prudently made the decision to see the responses that come back to the RFP. And then make an assessment at that time whether or not to pursue, further pursue like developing a city-run program. There is adequate time to develop and mount such a program at the time that, you know, that decision would be made. And typically, we were saying it would be in the February timeframe. And that would give ample time to to mount a city-run program if that's what city council directs at that time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for clarifying that. While we're on the topic of kind of the schedule and the timeline. And when proposals come in and when we might or might not look at bringing it in-house. I do want to just suggest potentially if. We get to January or so, that we might want to bring in a potential council subcommittee. To help aid in in some of those conversations to help guide that process. It does sound like this is going to, a lot of it come down to a contract and a negotiation. And I know that residents, you know, the buck stops up here. And so I think while we of course defer to our staff for recommendations. And there's going to be some desire from residents to, the council's heavily involved in those negotiations. So not for tonight, but as we continue an idea. So I I said, and I I spoke a little bit with Mayor Nash about this topic earlier. One thing that we didn't talk about, and that I didn't send ahead of time. Was about just the cycle of renewal of contracts and RFPs. I haven't studied it enough today to have a suggestion, but I do feel like over the past few years. There's been a few kinks in when vendors need to be notified and and how that relates to our fiscal year and when surveys are conducted. So as this process unfolds and a contract may or may not get written to to really think about. The sequencing of some of these actions would be a recommendation. So the other thing, before I give a few comments, and and these might be things I already brought up to you, Mr. Reinhardt. Is that. That I know, and this is mostly for the public, we're doing the RFP tonight. And as you mentioned in your presentation, the RFP is intentionally kind of broad. And without specifics in order to allow applicants to make their proposals. Kind of as freely and creatively as they think is appropriate. And so it's really going to be, it's really going to come down to once these proposals come in and the conversations and the negotiations, which is why I think. Having that council oversight over that is going to be so important. So I just wanted to let the public know that there might be words that sound vague or things that are left a little open. And that's intentional, but those will be buttoned up as this process unfolds. So just a few things I wanted to go through. In the RFP, it talks about a minimum of 63 hours a week. That we're looking for from any applicant. And Mr. Reinhardt, you wrote me and said that that's just kind of a baseline number, seven days a week, nine hours a day. So is your feeling that, you know, applicants can write in and propose that that might come back more? Because I know in the past, it's been tend to be more. So if you have any comments about that.
Uh, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. I think the expectation is that. In order for a proposal to be deemed most competitive, it would certainly exceed that bar. But just wanting in particular to make certain that prospective respondents know that the seven days per week. Is something that the city is definitely looking for at both locations. And that over the course of the year, you'd want to see that average to be substantial. You know, nine hours per day being kind of a baseline substantial. Kind of bar to 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 pass in order to be really considered and being competitive.
Great. And then jumping off that as an example. Do you want us on council now to be saying specifications that we want to be in the RFP? Or more signaling to applicants what are, what we think is going to be a better application? For example, when we talk about, you know, 63 hours per week. That might vary in summer and not summer, kind of peak time and not peak time. So an applicant who potentially is specifying, you know, their hours in these different seasons. Might be a richer application than one who's just doing a blanket average. So using that as an example, is that? Is that for you to put in the RFP or for us to signal again to applicants of the type of detail that we'd be seeking? I'm trying to understand the kind of the boundaries of what feedback you're looking for us to have.
Again, Vice Mayor, great question. I think it's a, it's a balance between providing. Clear expectations in the RFP. And that's communicated through the key city priorities to some respect, and also some of the other language in the RFP. But also not to be so constrained that, you know, the respondents. Find it difficult to kind of meet the numerous criteria there. So signaling it tonight is is very helpful. I would say putting it into the RFP language with too much specificity could create some constraints. That might, you know, reduce that flexibility a bit. Some other elements of the timeline include a pre-conference session with prospective respondents. Where we can kind of dive into some of those details a little bit more at the outset of the process. And so this is one of those items that, you know, we can kind of delve into a little bit further during during that part of the process.
Okay, but that type of feedback from us now is appropriate?
I believe so. I'm looking to the city attorney and city manager in case there's any concerns there, but I think that would be welcomed otherwise.
Okay, great. So I know that we do talk about resident priority in terms of user fees. And tracking. One of the things that, you know, I've thought is, you know, we passed a bond years ago to pay for the pool. So our taxpayers are paying for the pool. And so when we have a lot of non-residents using the pool, we're basically subsidizing them. So the the concept of potentially when non-residents use the pool, some. I know we talked about revenue sharing, but having, you know, additional revenue sharing come back to the city. Especially if the programs are being selected by the applicant. And if those, it would potentially incentivize an operator to prioritize resident, you know, directed. Programming if non-resident programming potentially led us to have more revenue. So I just wanted to mention that. One of the things I was curious was something that would be nice in the RFP. Just to, maybe it's like a narrative that the applicant could have, and I don't know how, it was very subjective. But kind of the trade-offs of the applicant is their thought process. Of how they go about determining the mix of programming. We obviously be specified in our priorities, you know, lessons, family swim. Wellness, things like that. But the key about the pool is that it's the scariest resource and there are a limited number of lanes. And so really kind of the thought process of that operator of of how they're doing that trade-off. They're, obviously they need to make money and have a business. But, you know, which programs are revenue generating, which, you know, if they need some of those to subsidize. More of the things that, you know, our residents want. That would be something that that I'd be curious in seeing. We talk a lot about the hours. And I know Mayor Nash has brought this up before, more talking about lane time. And then you mentioned this, Mr. Reinhardt, not just lane time, but kind of prime lane time versus not prime lane time. So there's obviously hours that are most coveted in the pool. Particularly morning, noon, and after work. And so again, kind of like how the operator is thinking through that. And then in terms of the, when we're scoring the the operators. I was curious about the weighting of those scores. Because the way it reads is a, like if the if the operator is really good at marketing. That would have the equal weight to the operator being really good at, you know, programming or scheduling or liability. And so to consider giving, thinking about the weighting of some of those priorities. I know at the end of the day, we have discretion to pick the operator we deem best, but a consideration, at least some qualitative. Weighting. And then also when we get to wanting to see the reporting. That the operator submits to the city. And again, I think Mayor Nash and I discussed the submitting it, not just annually, but potentially seasonally. So we know how things are going again, peak and non-peak summer, not summer seasons. But including making sure that there's information about resident, non-resident. And also gross and net income of the operator's financials. So those are just some high-level thoughts, but. I'm curious to hear my colleagues. But I think it's really great to see this on its way out. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. Others? So I will just add a few things. Basically, Vice Mayor Wilson touched on everything. Just the concept of lane hours, I think is a really important concept. To understand the equitable allocation of the swimming opportunities. Just an hour of lane time is different if it's one lane versus four lanes versus the entire pool. So I think that that is something that I, somehow we have to be able to understand how that's. How the pool is being allocated. Something else that was mentioned, just the selection criteria. In the scoring, it says that there is a reference on points for three points and four points. Demonstrated direct experience and I'm, it. Please consider perhaps a separate question rather than having it part of the scoring. But actually have it where a respondent is required to explain their experience that relates to the services. And that they will provide and have that weighted somehow, but don't have the weight on every single question because that seems like it. Really could, okay. And then the report, as Vice Mayor Wilson was talking about. Including programming by lane hours and schedule, participation by the resident, non-resident. Also documenting any in-service training that's happened during that. Time period and documenting any emergency calls and any issues or concerns that the operator might have. Suggestions, professional staff will take that and do what you want with it. And then there's been some question about whether or not we actually can provide therapeutic classes. And what the real definition is and I'll let you flush that out. And again, I really like the idea of. We have residents who are taxpayers who are paying for the pool both through the. Majority bond and also just in regular property taxes. So they're paying, they're basically underwriting the operating costs. However, we can somehow prioritize residents. Give residents a break with fees since they're already paying for it versus non-residents. That would be very beneficial and. I like the idea of, well, going through this election process. As much transparency, obviously, as possible. And I think the idea of a council subcommittee, along with the Parks and Rec Commission. Is something to consider. Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
Thank you. Overall, I'm supportive of of the approach of the the RFP. I will say I am concerned that we're being very prescribed. In in what we're asking. But in in as a result, constraining those. Entities that might. Submit a proposal, but but I don't know. So we're gonna, we're gonna see, we're gonna get signal. And and from those that that apply and and then and then we'll we'll go from there. I do want to confirm that there is some. We're making clear again in the language that there is some flexibility and that. Applicants shouldn't feel that if they can't. Meet every sort of suggestion or requirement that that would somehow. Indicate or signal to them that they shouldn't, they shouldn't submit a proposal. And and just just confirming that.
Thank you, council member. I believe that is like the intent, and we attempted to really capture that in the RFP. And I see heads nodding that that there's agreement and we definitely want to make sure that any prospective respondent is very much aware of that.
Again, totally fair. And I'll just add, since it's it's come up in the comments. I would be skeptical of of a subcommittee. Again, my concern is that you would have possibly, what I've seen on 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 council. Is two members sort of acting as a majority. Acting as the direction of council, giving direction to staff in ways in which it's not clear that the majority of council has asked. Are instructed. And so. I would be concerned of of a subcommittee and given all of the the attention. And impact, I would think that there would be something that would be delivered to the full council and the full council would weigh in on it. In a very sort of public invisible way and that you would not have a scenario where. Two members of the council were trying to frame it in a specific way to to the rest of of council. So that's just my thoughts. Again, I know that's a discussion for our decision for a later, a later date, but since it had, it it did come up. I felt the need to to respond to it. But again, thank you for 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 the work. I know from the last session, there was. Lots of feedback in direction that was given and and appreciate that that it has been memorialized in this RFP.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. And at this time, I do not have anything to add. The concerns that I had were actually already addressed. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one more comment based on Councilmember Combs's comment. And I very much agree that we need to have flexibility in the process. And I actually have had one prospective operator reach out to me. And they are concerned that they might not be able to, or they'd be interested in having the city do the. Registration and some of the, possibly the front desk work, which seems like it might be very. Anyway, I just would very much like you to encourage. Any and all thoughts, suggestions, variations, and we can see. How that proceeds. Thank you. So what feedback are you looking for? What? Motion would you like given?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor and council members for the excellent feedback that you've provided to date, including tonight. Has been very helpful. Staff is not seeking a motion at this time since the wheels have already been set in motion. And it seems that there is consensus with the feedback that was received tonight to move forward with the RFP. So I don't believe a motion or anything is required at this point, but this has been excellent feedback. And I I don't think we have any other questions for council at this time. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a very thorough and a lot of work has gone into it. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And looking forward to the responses. Thank you. The next regular business item is G2 Award Vehicle Purchase Contracts to Deere and Company, National Auto Fleet Group, Toro Company, Vermeer Manufacturing Company, and Volvo Construction Equipment and Services for the purchase and modification of police vehicles and motorcycles, light-duty trucks, and heavy-duty equipment for the fiscal year 2022-23 vehicle purchase. To introduce the item is Assistant Public Works Director Brian Henry. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Nash and City Council. My name is Brian Henry. I'm Assistant Public Works Director in charge of maintenance. Oftentimes, maintenance issues don't get to come to City Council, so it's nice to be here and to see you in person. I'm also here with Don Weber, our fleet supervisor. So first, we'll go over a little bit of background on this vehicle and equipment purchase. It's a purchase that we do every year. And it's a replacement of vehicles and equip, equipment based on mileage, age, downtime for repairs, and mandated emission regulations. This recommended purchase adheres to the City Climate Action Plan Number Five to eliminate fossil fuels from the city operations by 2030. And this purchase also adheres to the Sustainable Fleet Policy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by increasing the number of zero-emission fleet vehicles. So the city has a long history of maintaining a sustainable fleet, and it's highlighted by the Police Department's commitment to reducing greenhouse gases, which goes back to 2008. Most recently, last year, we purchased five electric vehicles in the 2021 Vehicle Purchase, and which was a major milestone for a police department of our size. In addition to the vehicle fleet, there are also 15 bicycles that are out on the street, patrolling whenever possible. Public Works' commitment has been there for a long time as well, but it's been a little more challenging because there aren't always electric options for some of the heavy equipment utilized by Public Works Maintenance. But a couple of highlights are our transition to renewable diesel, which reduces our greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions by about 90%. And last year, we purchased a hybrid aerial lift truck shown there in the bottom left. That piece of equipment uses renewable diesel to get to the job site, and then you can turn off the motor and a battery powers the bucket, so you can safely trim the trees. So on August 31st earlier this year, we presented to the EQC, and they voted six-zero with one commissioner absent to recommend and advise the City Council of the following actions. The first was to accept the proposed Police Department vehicle purchases. And the second was to request that staff consider the following feedback for the proposed public work purchases. And they had three pieces of advice, and I think the meeting was very constructive and positive. So the first was, are the timing of the purchases and how it relates to the air quality requirements and the end-of-life of our combustion-fired equipment. The second was to look into further alternatives for our public works equipment to present to City Council. And the third was to check with agencies that are providing electric incentives, incentives to inform us about available technologies. And so we followed through on all three of these directions, and they're outlined in the staff report. So here's what we're proposing for the Police Department. The purchase of one electric Ford Mustang Mach-E as a pool vehicle, one electric Ford F-150 Lightning for a community service truck, three electric detective vehicles, that includes two Mustang Mach-Es and one F-150 Lightning, and then three lower-emission BMW gasoline-powered motorcycles. And if approved, the Police Department would then have 14 electric vehicles and 18 hybrids for a total of more than 60% of the fleet operating at significantly reduced or zero emissions. For the Public Works Department, we recommend the purchase of 30 electric Ford F-150 Lightning light-duty trucks. And then following EQC's direction, we found one electric reel mower that is being used in South Pasadena at a golf course that we could also use to maintain our sports fields. And then the purchase of four renewable diesel-powered maintenance pieces of equipment. And so the photos here show what we'll be replacing. The bottom left is a roller. The red piece of equipment is the reel mower, which we're recommending be replaced with an electric option. And then a chipper, a stump grinder, and up on top is the farm tractor. So the recommendation is that City Council award vehicle purchase contracts for approximately $1.11 million, plus a contingency of $50,000, which will be held by the city for the purchase and modification of the following: five electric police vehicles, three lower-emission police motorcycles, three electric light-duty public works trucks, one piece of electric equipment, and four pieces of renewable diesel-powered equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G2 Award Vehicle Purchase Contracts to Deere and Company, National Auto Fleet Group, Toro Company, Vermeer Manufacturing Company, and Volvo Construction Equipment and Services for the purchase and modification of police vehicles and motorcycles, light-duty trucks, and heavy-duty equipment for the fiscal year 2022-23 vehicle purchase, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from the landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. For anyone in person who wishes to provide comment, please step up to the podium. This will be the final call for public comment on item G2. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We will now open for City Council discussion. Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and thanks for the presentation. So the, the total amount for the vehicles is, is $1.1 million. And, and obviously, I know based on direction from the council and our overall climate emission goals, the desire was to prioritize the emission levels of the vehicles we selected. Is, was there a comparison, if, if it was in the staff report, my apologies, and I missed it, of what the total cost would be if we did not prioritize low or no emission options in these, in these situations?
Yes, good question. So the total of 1.1 million is the purchase of all the vehicles, and then also the specialized outfitting, which adds quite a bit to each vehicle. And we can only base it off of the prices that we got and compared to prices of what we've got in previous years that were non-electric or traditional gas-powered. And our analysis is that going with the electric option is about 25% higher than, than traditional fuel. But we're also following the Sustainable Fleet Policy, which gives us direction to follow that electric option whenever possible, regardless of the cost.
Okay. All right, that's my only question.
Just to continue that question, not to, I don't expect you to have answers for this, but the total cost of operations, I would imagine, would also be less given the savings on the fuel costs, especially with the price of gas these days, and also on maintenance, because the EVs have fewer moving parts in the engine, and they don't need oil changes. So I don't know how we ever actually analyze that, but I know that those are factors that go into the total cost of the operation. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I know that Mr. Henry stated the percentage of vehicles for the Police Department that are electric. Do you know the number overall for all of the city vehicles? What percentages are total vehicles that are electric? What percentage of our overall fleet is electric?
We don't have, I don't have a percentage, but the overall total of vehicles will be 15.
Thank you.
How many total vehicles do we have?
Approximately 115.
Thank you. Are there other questions, or is someone ready to make a motion? Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. My question is, I know that this evening, it is the Public Works Vehicles and the Police Department. Is the senior shuttle on the list to be replaced? I asked this question when the Teslas were on our agenda.
The senior shuttle bus is not currently on the list to be replaced, I believe, fiscal year 24-25. It will be up for replacement.
Thank you. Mayor Nash, I would like to make a motion to include that we put the senior shuttle on the replacement list sooner.
I will look to 2023, if possible. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I will look to City Manager Justin Murphy for that.
Let's see, I, I would say if, if it's part of the motion to conduct the analysis as part of the 23-24 year, but I don't think we want to prejudge and actually put it on, on a list. But if you want us to, to conduct the analysis of what it would mean to replace it earlier, I think, I think that can be accommodated, but I wouldn't want to prejudge the actual replacement of it just yet.
That works for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. So you've made the motion. Do we have a second? I will second the motion. City Clerk Karen, would you please? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, there, there's a normal process by which the city makes a determination about vehicles that need to be replaced. And so if we're sort of adding to that from the dais, I think I need to know why. Like, right, if the city will do an analysis of which I think all of the vehicles in its fleet will be considered. And so like, I, I don't know why we would say that a vehicle that maybe the city has decided not to put in that analysis or is in that analysis, we would look at differently. So that, that's just my concern. I, I, it may not be something that, that of which there is much value in objecting to. And so, but, but I did want to, on the record, state that, that in theory, I'm, I'm not supportive in an analysis that would go outside of whatever the city's standard process is. Secondly, I just wanted to say before we go into, I, I don't know that like I completely accept the mayor's analysis that the cost for electric vehicles are, are recovered in maintenance. I, I think for one of those vehicles, you said that like it was only being used by a golf course in South Pasadena or something like that. That does not warm my heart with regards to the quality or the track record we could expect when you could only find it being used at a golf course in, in South Pasadena. But that being said, I, I am supportive of these purchases because to the point, it has been the goal of, of the city, and it has been expressed by, by the council. And as I've always said, that the extent to which we have these climate change goals, I think the city should bear that cost first and foremost before we push that cost on to, or those obligations on to, to residents. And so I think it's in line to support this, even though I don't know if I quite accept the rationale that the, the cost is, is recovered specifically. But just wanted to make that, that statement before we, before we move to the vote.
And I want to make one statement before calling on Councilmember Taylor, and that's, I in no way mean to assert that it's fully recovered. It's just that there is some offset by that, and I don't know how much. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. And, and just to, to follow up, when the vehicle replacements came to us before, I brought up my concern that the senior shuttle was not on the list. And at that time, may have been the request time for me to bring up the idea of having an analysis, because it is one of the few multi-passenger vehicles that the city owns. So I think there's value in analyzing whether it is time to replace it if we're looking to reduce carbon emissions.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor, and a second by Mayor Nash to award the vehicle purchase contracts to Deere and Company, National Auto Fleet Group, Toro Company, Vermeer Manufacturing Company, and Volvo Construction Equipment and Services for approximately $1.11 million, plus a contingency of $50,000 for the purchase and modification of five electric police vehicles, three lower-emission police motorcycles, three electric light-duty public works trucks, one piece of equipment, of electric equipment, and four pieces of renewable diesel-powered equipment, and direct staff to conduct a study to replace the senior shuttle sooner than 2025. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller absent.
Thank you, and fabulous job on the reading of the motion. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the City Council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the City Council. Informational items are not action items. However, a City Councilmember, City Staff Member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our closed session items, H1, City Council Agenda Topics, H2, Drought Update, or H3, Menlo Park's Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in chambers, please step up to the podium. And our first speaker will be Pam Jones. And Pam, I'll ask you to identify the item you are speaking on before your comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Judy. Agenda item H3, this is Pam Jones, resident of Menlo Park, Valhavn neighborhood. I was looking through the hazard mitigation information and all of the items and the dates in the, the two and a half pages of charts, and I was looking for something that, that addressed comprehensive communications. And the reason I asked that is, as a reminder, not everybody is signed up or even knows about signing up for alerts. They may not be signed, they may not even have a computer, you know, may not have a smartphone, it may, and, and so we need to make sure that every single resident receives the information that's appro, you know, appropriate. You know, District Five, we have to worry about wildfires up there, but even more so, smoke inhalation, and we have elderly people up there as well as young. So I would really like for us to add an action item when possible that deals specifically with having a comprehensive citywide communication plan, unless you already have it, and I'm unless you already have it and I missed it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Lynn Bramlett. And Lynn, if you could also state the item you're speaking on before making a comment.
Yes, good evening again. I'm speaking on the one Ms. Jones just spoke about, the local hazard mitigation plan. So as background, I followed the process closely, including attending county-driven meetings, and I submitted detailed input into the Menlo Park one, and I was quite disappointed with the backroom process. I did not see any of my suggestions included. I was told they were, but I didn't see them, and I think they're still valid today. And I believe one of them pertains to this topic that Ms. Jones spoke about. So I really appreciate council's request for an annual progress report, and I'd love to see this for all of our major planning efforts. Let me delve into my concerns. First, the policy issue. So I recognize that the local hazard mitigation plan was developed so that Menlo Park could apply for federal and other sources of money. However, I would like to see policies related to public safety included. One would be my understanding of the city's mission to protect and preserve the life and property from the impact of fire, disaster, injury, and illness. And then I was concerned at the assumption that the city council approved the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator to assist with implementing the local hazard mitigation plan. That would make the role a very narrow one. Instead, I think the role should be much broader and that it should follow federal and state policy recommendations, standards, and evidence-based practices. So I know that position hasn't been, you know, hired yet. I sent in a suggested job description for the role along with a related venue, if you will, where the whole community could work together better to work on addressing these issues. So then I would suggest to include a chart of all the items because the project details and narrative forms weren't as easy. You could follow them, and a lot of them pertain to meetings, but I would think it would be better for council to see all of them. But my main concern is that I continue to see no real disaster preparedness strategy. Instead, I see a collection of activities and outside deadlines driving plans such as the safety element updates and the local hazard mitigation plan. So I'd like us to work together, and I do want to briefly in my remaining time say the fire chief has been listening. And he had a key staff depart. He is not going to replace that role. That would be the district's Disaster Response Manager. He is renaming the Office of Emergency Management to the Community Resilient and Engagement Unit and replacing the departed employee's role with the Community Volunteer Coordinator working with, he recognizes the evidence around this, working with community volunteers, et cetera. So this is a positive breath of fresh air. Love to see similar in Menlo Park, and I do appreciate the council's commitment to safety, that you've done a lot to help that I haven't seen before. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle. And Jenny, if you could let us know what item you are commenting on.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, vice mayor, staff. I am actually, well, I wanted to echo Pam and Lynn, but I was actually calling regarding the drought update for Menlo Park Municipal Water. So as many of you know, I am a longtime resident in Menlo Park. Actually, I've been a renter for almost twenty years. I also represent those who work full-time, if not with several jobs, and are still unable to make ends meet. And I, you know, I've been cataloging by way of commuting on my bike and canvassing No on Measure V, numerous single-family residence zone neighborhoods with lush and fluffy landscaping for various parcels. In normal times, I'd probably be loving these extensive grounds, but that is no longer the case. And professionally, I understand the actual water use for these types of plant materials and tree species. I am a commercial property manager, and I manage commercial product throughout the peninsula. And so the problem is, is that I think we're sending a message, if not lip service, that I can have mine and you cannot have yours. In this case, my landscaping or plant material is more important than your life as a fellow human being because I don't support dense housing, right? I get there's a little bit of a reach there, but if you can, so the measure is basically saying if you can have density, like you can have density, but not in my neighborhood. So that means I can use all the water that I want. I just pay the fee because I can. I have the resources to be able to. And I would argue, no, that is not the case, and that we cannot set that new precedent moving forward that simply you are deterred with a fee for overconsumption. So I challenge council to consider deterring our single-family residents from using excessive water. It is fairly easy and inexpensive to retrofit your dwelling to capture the gray water and repurpose it into your landscaping and other areas such as your laundry. I also encourage council to continue to drive home the point that we have obligations to meet at the municipality level and that our neighbors are not considering their own personal interests over that of the greater good. And for those reasons, I just encourage you to also consider including residents, not just commercial product landlord zoned. Use, oh my God, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, H-one through H-three. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the information items? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, and I don't know if anyone on staff would be able to answer, but just following up on Ms. Michelle's comment. Does the city have any ability other than rates and sort of like, you know, kind of voluntary restrictions when it comes to, you know, trying to have an impact on people's water usage? Right? I mean, there isn't, if there is, there isn't any, or I guess I should let you answer if you can. But I'll just say, I don't know if there's any other avenue, and certainly we would all sort of agree, sort of restricting access to water for anyone would be incredibly problematic. But I do want to give people or give staff the opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Nikki Nagaya, Public Works Director, so I will attempt to answer your question. But essentially, you're correct, our main enforcement mechanisms for drought regulations are through either restrictions on water use, which we codify, in this case, through a resolution that the council adopted in May, and then through the water rates that we charge customers. So in terms of landscaping and Ms. Michelle's comments tonight, there are regulations in place currently that limit the frequency of irrigation that property owners can do on their property. So depending on your house number, it limits, whether you're even or odd house number, you have a limitation on which days of the week you can water. So we do have a water waster reporting platform on the city's website where you can go in and submit information that will then go out and investigate, work with a property owner to identify if they're overwatering or watering outside of those days that are codified. So we will follow up on those reports, but the main mechanism is through either those regulations or water rates.
And one follow-up question that I just had, and I very much do follow the restrictions personally, although I got confused on whether it was an even number or odd number for like a week, but then I corrected that. Do those restrictions apply, the landscaping restrictions applying in scenarios where the landscaping is like edible, and since it is fruit or it's vegetable that's being grown in some way, do they apply still, or is there some exceptions when we're talking about like something that is not necessarily aesthetic landscaping, but actual food?
Yeah, that's a great question and good distinction. The regulations are for ornamental landscaping, so not necessarily applicable for food in that case.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Woolson.
Thank you. And Ms. Nagaya, we only can have regulations over the Menlo Park Municipal Water customers, or we can't do anything about Bear Gulch or Cow Water.
Correct. There are multiple water agencies that serve residents within Menlo Park. Cow Water, Bear Gulch is one, and another is the O'Connor District, which serves a portion of the Willow's neighborhood. They all set their own water regulations, but we do coordinate closely to try to have consistency so that if residents are hearing information about restrictions, you're generally hearing the same message about conservation. So we do work closely, particularly with Cow Water, to try to set those regulations so they're consistent for all residents.
Thank you. And I do want to personally confess to having a lawn. I'm working on my husband to change our landscaping. We're all on a journey here, but I completely hear Ms. Michelle's concerns. And I think with a lot of these things, sometimes it takes people hearing it many times to get the full message. But I really appreciate her elevating it, and it's something we definitely all need to take seriously. So thank you.
Through the mayor, if I may take this opportunity to just do a plug for our Lawn Begone incentive program. So there is a program that Basco sponsors for most of the agencies across the peninsula. Menlo Park Municipal Water customers can take advantage as well. Will provide a rebate towards landscaping conversion if you want to remove lawn and install drought tolerant landscaping in its place. I'm a Mid Penn Water customer and went through the program last year, and it was super easy and seamless. So highly encourage folks to try to take advantage of that, too.
I'll let my husband know again when I get home.
Thank you. And water restrictions do cover single-family, multifamily, and commercial developments, correct?
Correct. So all water customer types are included, the ones you mentioned, as well as industrial irrigation accounts. They apply to all customers.
Thank you very much. So next we have the City Manager's Report with City Manager Justin Murphy.
Great. Thank you. I do have a couple updates I'd like to share this evening, so bear with me. So we do have a few, or a couple environmental documents that could be released for two projects, both of which are located in the bayfront area of Menlo Park. So the first is this Thursday, a mitigated negative declaration for the proposed hot hotel moxie, sorry, hotel moxie project located thirty-seven, twenty-three Haven will be released for a thirty-day public review period. The Planning Commission is scheduled to review the environmental document in the proposed project, which consists of a hundred and sixty-three room hotel with a restaurant, bar, coffee shop, and publicly accessible rooftop garden on November fourteenth. So that's the Hotel Moxie project on Haven. The environmental documents being released this Thursday with a Planning Commission meeting on November fourteenth. So then the second project to identify is related to the Willow Village project that's been under review for a number of years. This Friday is a major milestone of the release of the final environmental impact report and the fiscal impact analysis. And the Planning Commission is scheduled to review the project on October twenty-fourth. So the key documents being released this Friday and Planning Commission meeting scheduled for October twenty-fourth. And then after the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, then it would be scheduled for the city council targeted for a November meeting. So those are two development projects. And then I would like to just make another plug for the advisory body recruitments that were mentioned earlier this evening, that there are openings for the Environmental Quality Commission, Library Commission, and Planning Commission. And the deadline for applications is this Friday, October fourteenth. In terms of advisory bodies, as was referenced in the staff report this evening, we will be starting the process of conducting hybrid meetings for our advisory bodies. So the first body that's up is the Finance and Audit Committee, and they're scheduled to meet next Wednesday, October nineteenth. And then we will have a series of other commissions beginning hybrid meetings in November and then continuing over the subsequent months. So as of January, all advisory bodies should be conducting meetings in a hybrid setting. So then finally, I'd like to put in a plug for Halloween Hoopla. So the annual Menlo Park Halloween Parade is returning to downtown Menlo Park scheduled for Saturday, October twenty-ninth from eleven AM to two PM. The festivities will commence at near Malaney, Malaney Lane, Maloney Lane, Maloney Lane, and continue down Santa Cruz Ave and end at Fremont Park. So that's Halloween Hoopla on Saturday, October twenty-ninth. So those are just a few updates of things on the horizon.
Thank you. Are there any reports from city council members since the September twentieth meeting? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nash. I want to start off my council report with expressing my condolences to the family and the colleagues of the tree trimmer that died on Bay Road earlier today. I spoke to some neighbors in the area, and you know, as is understandable, everyone was completely traumatized. And so also, I know that the city staff and obviously police and emergency responders have no doubt have been deeply sort of impacted. And so my thoughts are with them also. So I wanted to say that. I also wanted to say that this weekend, the city manager and Mr. Louch in the Public Works Department and about, I don't know, at our highest point, maybe we had seven or eight flood triangle residents who went on a walking tour with us starting at Bay and Willow Road and ending essentially, you know, into the Flut Triangle neighborhood near, somewhat near the Iris Gate to the Flood, to Flood Park. And so, and in that, we sort of identified a number of areas for possible, you know, pedestrian and other sort of transportation improvements. And yeah, and obviously, there will be, some of them were what you might be called quick fixes. Some of them were multimillion dollar projects that hopefully I'll still be on council when we get to. But I do appreciate the city manager and Mr. Louch taking their time to spend their Saturday morning with me and some Flut Triangle residents. That does, though, then dovetail into a request, an official request to council. One of the things that we identified and talked about on that walk was One of the things that we, we identified and talked about on that walk was the, the left turn from Bay. Onto, onto Willow. I mean, technically at that intersection, Willow extends further into what we think of as Bay. But we'll just say it's, it's Bay and Willow. And as part of one of the mitigations or traffic mitigations. Connected with a, a development agreement for one of the projects, which I can't name specifically, on the Bayside was turning. Was creating two left turns at that intersection from Bay onto Willow and, and thereby. Reducing significantly the size of the median and, and also removing one of the oak trees. Right? I think they're oak trees, aren't they? And, and so after some discussion with Mr. Murphy and with the residents. We would actually, or I would like to ask the council to revisit that decision of, of adding an additional left turn lane there. And actually. You know, leaving that intersection in its current state. We, we think it can be cleaned up a bit. It certainly has not received a lot of TLC recently, and there are some, some weeds. But we don't know if adding an additional left turn lane there leans into the overall sort of transportation priorities. In complete street approach that our city has, has, has adopted. And so I know that was a pretty long council member report, but, but, but those. Yeah, so that is, that is my request. I am engaging Mr., so there may be no specific action for the council now, because I'm engaging Mr. Murphy. Like how that can, what's the process for revisiting that? Because it's something, as I understand, has been approved by council, but, but I do think, like I said. Taking something that is very much geared towards vehicular traffic and cars. And sort of rethinking and pulling back and saying, maybe that, that's not our priority, in, in my mind, very much leans into what. I, I've heard from this council is, is a priority, and so that's why I feel very comfortable asking for, for this reconsideration.
Thank you. Do we need to have a second or anything to get that to come back to council? I certainly would support that.
Yes, we can follow up on the specifics, but if there's no objection to it coming back at this point, as, as of this evening. Then we can work through the specifics of how best to bring that back to the city council.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yeah, was that sufficient? Are we moving on or?
Do you have a report out?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, there were two recent meetings I attended that I wanted to just share. One was with the Palo Alto Community Fund. Mayor Nash was invited to attend as a liaison with Menlo Park, the Palo Alto Community Fund. They were saying it's kind of like the united way of Palo Alto, East Palo Alto and Menlo Park. Which I told them, I didn't think their branding was very good, because it's called the Palo Alto Community Fund. So they have an advisory board and they want an ongoing relationship and liaisons with East Palo Alto, Palo Alto and Menlo Park. And they've invited the mayors to join that, so I just wanted to let you all know. And I spoke to the city manager about potentially making that more of an official thing in the December, kind of liaison appointment. Times, so I wanted to highlight that, and they do give money, they raise money from community members. And then grant the money to organizations in Menlo Park, East Palo Alto and Palo Alto. The other meeting that I went to, and I've actually been going to these meetings for about six years. It's called the Community Trust, and Maurice Geisel, when he was superintendent of MPCSD. Created this group called the Community Trust. It's an informal, they, they call it informal, of different community members. All related to the safety, well-being of children. And I used to attend as a parent and then as the chair of parents for Safe Routes. And then as an individual person that still cares about kids. But it's mostly made up of school officials, superintendents, police, Chief Norris is there. So is the, the chief of Atherton, different transportation folks, sometimes someone from Public Works is there. A lot of talk about bike safety. Lately, they were talking about, you know, school shooter drills and schools and whatnot. And it's just kind of a legacy that I go to those meetings, because I've been going to those meetings for years. But in my conversations, again, with Mr. Murphy, it might be more appropriate for, you know, now that I'm on council. And it's occurring to us to have that be maybe either the school person to go to those. Or at least a, an, a designee of the council. Because while I was attending kind of as an individual, knowing that, and I make that clear when I'm attending those meetings. It might be more appropriate for that to be kind of a council-designated position. So I just wanted to flag those two organizations and let you know, I think that Mr. Murphy was gonna consider adding those. To the list of kind of liaison board stuff that we nominate each other for, for December. So that was my update.
Thank you very much, and I would like to report out about the Peninsula Clean Energy. I believe we have a slide on it.
Have that, which one did you want to begin with?
The 2021 Community Benefit Summary, please.
So Peninsula Clean Energy has every year shares a community benefit summary for Menlo Park. Well, for each city, and highlights that in 2021. There was $1.1 million estimated annual customer savings for Menlo Park. This is compared to other, the PG&E electrical rates. That 98% of electric, electricity customers in Menlo Park use Peninsula Clean Energy. And actually, I guess, as you compare to the county-wide achievements, which is 97% in 2021. And our rate reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from electricity compared to 2016 was 99%. In Menlo Park compared to 98% countywide, which is an equivalent of 139,000 metric tons of CO2. Equivalent to, equivalent emissions were avoided since 2016 compared to emissions from using 15.7 million gallons of gas. And with a 1.7 million metric tons for the. County, so very proud of what Peninsula Clean Energy is doing. It's a, since 2016, Menlo Park joined San Mateo County and all the other cities in the county. To form Peninsula Clean Energy, and they've just done, it's been a very, very successful. Organization. Thank you, and this is since 2016, Menlo Park customers have had $6.8 million in savings. And 99% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions since 2016. I will also plug that there are many different incentives to electrify your house, your car, and business. If you go to the Peninsula Clean Energy website, there's a lot of, it's an excellent staff there. Doing a lot of work. Thank you. So with that, let's adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Just still checking, I need, just confirm any other council member reports. Councilmember Taylor.
Did not.
Perfect, thank you.
Return, thank you.